We'll call the August nineteenth Apopka City Council meeting to order. We'll have Commissioner Smith give us the invocation, pledge, and fact of the day.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, Father Martin, thank you now for that opportunity to come before your presence as we prepare for this city council meeting. We thank your Father for what you've already done in our lives and what you're about to do even now. We pray, Lord, for your guidance for this council, for this mayor. If we protect those decisions, it's going to impact the citizens of Apopka. We pray, oh God, for your peace upon the citizens that are here this afternoon. That we have a sense of peace and a sense of understanding that we may disagree, in order that we might agree. That all that we should be pleased and accepted in your sight, in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, fact of the day, on August nineteenth, eighteen twelve, during the War of eighteen twelve, the U.S. named the frigate Constitution to beat the British frigate at Tetera in a battle off the coast of Nova Scotia. Witnesses claim that the British shot merely thousands off the Constitution's side as if the ship was made of iron rather than wood. The American-British vessels were embarking each other in close and violent action. By the end of the battle, the British ship was derailed while the Constitution escaped with only minimal damage. The unexpected victory of all iron sides against the British frigate helped unite America behind the war effort and made Commander Hook a national hero. The Constitution went on to defeat or capture seven more British ships in the War of eighteen twelve and ran the British rocket league of Boston twice. In eighteen fifty-five, the Constitution retired from active military service, but continued to serve the United States as a training ship and later as a touring national landmark, by fact of the day.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, we've got one little change that I need to make aware of on the, uh, the consent items, it's, we've got six and in the, uh, in the, in the minutes, it says we only, there's three, so we just need to change that to make it say six. So with those amendments to the, the minutes, can anybody motion to approve the amendment, amended, amended minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, Edward, anything on the agenda, any changes?
No, Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, public comment time. Susan?
Okay, uh, we have, um, Narette Turan.
Hello? Good evening, Honorable Mayor, esteemed councilmen. My name is Narette Turan and I work for the pub, I work for the Design Engineering Division of the Public Services Department, otherwise known as Public Works. I've served the city for six years next month. I try to be a good example. I work with managers like Glenn Brooks and report to manager Vladimir Simonovsky, who are in the back row, whom lead by example. As professional engineers in our division, our mission, our professional responsibility is to add value and to provide leadership in our areas of practice. Sorry. Every year of service, I gain more knowledge and I feel more empowered to help the customers that we serve. As a public servant, I feel no sense of entitlement, and that's why I've come this evening to speak. At the last city council meeting, a member of the fire department stood at this lectern and called Public Services the backbone of the city. That same individual stood here and spoke of hours worked and hours away from family. He spoke of a fifty-six hour work week as opposed to the forty hour so many of us enjoy. Ladies and gentlemen, in the name of transparency, of truth and accuracy, he was speaking of a twenty-four forty-eight schedule, twenty-four hours on, forty-eight hours off. So that means in a three-day cycle, more specifically defined in the policy manual as a forty-eight seventy-two work week rotation, two full days are off, two full days off are enjoyed. While the typical forty-hour worker with their seven-day cycle has two full days off, it's called the weekend and it goes by quick, you almost feel like life passes you by. This misrepresentation of dedication to the job convinced me to speak up. I recalled my duty as the former vice chair of general pension, which was to shine a light on the disparity between general and police-fire pensions versus police-fire pensions. I tried to explain the sacrifice of the general employees, whom averaged three percent raises, while fire enjoys an average of six, an excess of six, and police nearly five. Ladies and gentlemen, pension is based on salary, and even worse yet, general pension accrual for each year of service is thirty-one percent less than police-fire. This is no, this is a known disparity that was to be rectified by a vote that has gone unanswered. Esteemed council, these are factors that need to be considered when budgeting for raises, when budgeting for salaries. When other departments voice their expectation of raises, perhaps they should be reminded that merit is defined as to be worthy or deserving, therefore in no way construed as an entitlement. Commissioners Banksen, Smith, Becker, and Mayor Nelson. Metaphorically, we need only to remove our face covering, and literally, we need only to put one on to recognize that these are the times that try men's souls. It is during a pandemic that we can show what it means to be all in this together. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and, um, may your decisions for next fiscal year be, be aided by divine guidance.
Thank you, Narette.
You're welcome.
Okay, Susan?
Thank you.
Okay, next one, we have...
Madam Speaker.
Sure, absolutely.
Next up is Sam Anderson.
Is that the last person to count down there, or is that mine?
Oh.
No.
Sorry. Okay, all right, we need a little more time than that. Okay, uh, my name is Sam Anderson, uh, one twelve East Sixth Street, and I'm here regarding next year's budget. First and foremost, I wrote the letter that you all received regarding the merit program. I stand behind it. I didn't sign it for several reasons. First of all, I believe it represents the general mood within the police department and not the feelings of one person. I don't think anyone could have written a letter that captured everyone's feelings perfectly, but someone has to be the voice for those who have concerns, and it served its purpose to get a conversation started. Writing and sending that letter and being here tonight are not acts of cowardice. I stood here in twenty eighteen and mentioned just about everything in that letter, and it's frustrating that we're here having to fight this battle for the second time in three years. And it's not just about COVID, and I believe the proof is in the numbers. And as far as numbers are concerned, when you hear from other municipalities that they are not getting a cost of living adjustment, you may be missing the bigger picture. They may have either a merit or tenure-based pay plan. I spoke with, for example, the deputy chief of Winter Park last year, or last week, excuse me. Their officers with zero to five years of service get five percent raises annually, that's a retention incentive. Their sergeants get three and a half percent raises, and their lieutenants making seventy-five thousand dollars or more get a one percent raise. So even though you may have heard that a particular city is not getting a COLA, there are almost certainly other built-in retention incentives, including fringe benefits, which we often overlook. Oh, COE, I got a copy of their contract from the chief yesterday. They have a step plan, what you might call a show up to work and get a raise sort of a program, not based on merit, it's in their contract. Their non-union employees, including Public Works and other such things, are getting an automatic three percent raise next year. I'd just like to point out some things, we got a, an email citywide.
Excuse me, young man.
Yes.
No, 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 let him talk, no, 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 no.
It's his turn, it's his turn.
Please, please, please.
No, it's his turn.
We cannot, the older people cannot understand him, he's muffling, you hear muffling sounds.
Oh, okay.
Can you take your best off?
Certainly.
What you're saying is very important, we all need to hear it.
I apologize, I wasn't aware you couldn't hear me. We got an email citywide from the mayor on July thirty-first with a, and a copy of the proposed budget attached. Everybody got this, in the third paragraph, the email references a three million dollar shortfall in sales tax revenue. If you look at the sales tax portion of the budget and subtract next year's proposed revenue from this year's, it's two million four hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, not three million. The mayor's email also references a intact, a property income, excuse me, a property tax increase, which will generate nine hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. Again, if you go to the revenue portion of the budget and subtract this year's property tax revenue from next year's, it's actually over a million dollars, it's not nine hundred thousand. Finally, the mayor's email references the sale of a property of Sandpiper and Rock Springs as closing the remainder of a one million dollar deficit. Anybody can go on the city's website, I did it today, that parcel is listed for one million two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. So while you may consider that being conservative, that's a difference of nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars between what the mayor sent in this email to us and the budget that was attached to it. I just want to end by saying that we sincerely appreciate what we have, we really do. I don't mean to come up here and gripe, um, but people are not exactly knocking down our door to become cops, if you haven't seen the news recently. And on that topic, we have ninety-eight filled positions of the one hundred and twelve that were authorized. So the question is, do we have those funds? Could we not say perhaps fill three-quarters of those vacancies and the funding that you have for the remainder perhaps use as a retention incentive for the people that you've got here now? Rather than the revolving door, rather than the hundred thousand plus dollars that I think it's estimated to cost to hire a new police officer? Why not just keep the good people, the dedicated people that we have here, keep them happy? It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But I appreciate your time, um, any questions?
Yeah, let me, a couple of things that you maybe are misunderstood, under the sales tax reduction, there's two parts of sales tax, so if you look at those numbers, the, the numbers I gave you are accurate. The second thing is, and as you say, that the, um, the property ad valorem went up one point two million, you're absolutely correct. What nine hundred thousand goes to, that is the quarter mill, if we go up a quarter mill, that's what it'll generate, so you're wrong there as well. Uh, the third part is, yeah, the one point two million, we might get one point two million for Sandpiper, and if we do, it will all go toward either reducing outstanding liabilities or toward raises or capital improvements. But other than that, yeah, what you said's pretty accurate.
So the, I just want to make sure that it's about my math, for current property taxes, thirteen seven oh five, proposed next year, fourteen seven eleven.
That's, that's because we're adding, we're adding the, the quarter mill for...
But, but that's an increase...
That's in, right.
Not of nine hundred thousand dollars, it's over a million dollars.
That portion that you're looking at there is what the current mileage rate is. The, the, the commissioners adopted an additional nine hundred thousand to fill the gap of the, that you see in the, in the total for the budget. So what you see there is the current mileage rate that we currently have, that is what that number is set at, that's the revenue that the new, that the original mileage rate generates. The nine hundred that the mayor's speaking about is if we raise, which we have raised, we have set a proposed mileage rate of, um, a quarter of a point, and so therefore that would generate the nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's where the nine hundred comes from.
And the, the sales tax, the estimated sales tax shortfall?
There's, there's two different, there's two different pieces of sales tax.
Right, is it the half-cent sales tax?
You have to look at half-cent and you have to look at revenue sharing, both of those are sales tax. So if you look at the state revenue or the municipal revenue sharing number, those two together represent your sales tax.
I just assumed that when it said that along with other smaller losses from the COVID pandemic, that perhaps that was referencing those numbers. At any rate, I think the money's there, I don't understand the...
So wait a minute, so where, where is the money then, I just, I'm just trying, trying to understand.
Well, uh, four hundred thousand dollars of it is on Fifth Street repaving Central Business.
Now, that's the CRA money, so...
Okay, um, let's see, we gave up somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars of revenue from a red light camera program with absolutely no plan to replace it. Um, and I'll quote you on that, the police will have to write tickets to make up for that.
I'm not sure that's a quote, but, okay.
It's close enough.
Um, and I don't think that the net revenue from, if you go back and look at the numbers for red light cameras, I don't think the net revenue is anywhere near that number, but...
Well, this, that's on here too.
No, it's, you, you gotta look at, there's revenue and there's expenses, the red light cameras just don't, you, you collect money, but you don't get to keep it all.
So traffic light fines of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Correct, it didn't all come to the city of Apopka, it's not net.
Then why is that on the budget as a revenue source?
It is, but there are also costs associated with that.
That, that particular line item is just the, the ramping down of the closure, that's the remaining infractions that were still outstanding from my understanding. But generally speaking, during the, during the height of that program, the city was netting, uh, just shy of a million dollars a year, so nine hundred and some...
Well, not even net, no.
Because we were, we were collecting like one point six or something like that, and then the, the balance was put over as a cost of, of service to ATS. But yeah, generally speaking, that's correct.
And the state, and the state was collecting a big chunk of the, of the hundred and...
But all, from my understanding, I think there's going to be other speakers here, so I'll just, um, I'll table my comments to the end, but what I would ask is, and I'll just kind of carry on from the conversation I had the last meeting, is generally speaking, what, what is the ask, though? You know, and, um, for this year, knowing where we're at this year, what, what is the comfort level that you all feel? Um, knowing that we're probably not going to be able to get you what it's been, you know, the, the past few years, but, you know, what's, what's middle ground here that we can start talking through? Because like we, like, like we've all said, you know, the final, final date is until September ninth, um, so I think there's still some opportunity for us to all discuss this at the council level.
I think we're all sensitive to that, and I, I don't think we have any sort of unreasonable or unrealistic expectation, but, um, if you remove a merit-based program, then you remove incentives for performance, right? It, it's not a, it's not a show up to work and get a raise, that's not the way we do business, we never have.
I, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that, I, I would not disagree with that, I'd love to have a merit base, and I'd love to be four or five percent, I mean, there's no doubt. But, but we, we felt like the employee deserves something, but yet we can't, you know, we've got, you know, five hundred employees, and every one point, however you figure it, across the board, from public services to admin to fire and police is three hundred thousand dollars. I, you know, I dropped the book off, huh?
If I may, the frustration lies in the fact that when I asked the chief about this, because we get upset with him for not, because we don't think he's lobbying for us, but when I asked him about this, he says that the first he hears about these budget cuts is on a PowerPoint last month. I don't know if that's true or not, it's frustrating to us that we have no voice, no liaison, and that's why you see us going in the direction of collective bargaining. So I'm not saying we want it, and it's a double-edged sword, and we're all aware of that, um, but we, we want to talk, we want to communicate, we don't want to be blindsided.
I, I don't think we've, I mean, I can tell you, it's not been a blind side, we've been as completely transparent and open on the process, and if the chief, I mean, I, I, I'm surprised that you'd say that. I mean, I, I think we, we, you know, he came in with a, here's the list, and we, you know, of things he needed to have, and then here's some wants that he'd love to do, and some of them had, were additional benefits for the police, and fire has the same thing, and, and Public Works, but it's like, okay, guys, here's where we're at, we gotta get, we've got this, we've got to do, and then here's what we'd like to do, and, and raises were a part of that, merit raises, whatever you want to call them, were a part of that discussion, but we just, we, I don't know how we get there. And, and it's not to say in January, if, if we're wrong and, and the sales tax comes back, it's not to say we can't do something at that point, but, but, you know, it's, it's, we struggle here with employees, which we've got awesome employees. There's no doubt we've got the best in Central Florida, but we also struggle, we've got constituents out there, we've got seventy, seventeen percent unemployment. So what do I tell the people that, that can't pay their rent, that, hey, you know, it's okay, you're going to pay more property tax so we can give our guys more money? I, I, you know, it's, so it's a struggle for us up here, is how do we, how do we balance out, you know, paying our employees what they deserve and, and need, and taking care of the constituents who right now are struggling? I mean, it's, I, I got a, um, a big, uh, uh, construction company that just laid off four hundred a month ago. I got another electrician just laid off fifty. So what do I tell those guys that are out of a job, that would love to have a, a pay of their old pay? They take, I, I was at, I was at, um, I was at the, getting my car washed, and I'm sitting there next to the guy, a couple, the lady's got her job, she's a teacher. The husband works for a big hotel company down on International Drive, and he said, man, he said, I'd, I'd love to, you know, he's, because he said, man, I can't believe they're complaining about, you know, raises. I said, what do you mean? He says, I just said, I got, you know, they brought us all in, laid off twenty-five percent of us, the rest of us, he said, you know what, it's thirty percent reduction in pay, no bonuses, take it or leave it. He goes, so where am I going to get another job in a, in a hotel in Central Florida? I said, no, I know, it's, it's a challenge, it's a, it's a, it's a challenge, and so I think we, we all, we all want to get to where you want to be, and, and I don't think anybody here's, you know, you know, um, opposed to giving raises, but man, it's just, it's a tough time to, to, to look for money when, when the constituents are struggling at least as hard as you guys are.
I, I wouldn't ask for or expect, even though I think our mileage rate is artificially low, I wouldn't, I mean, it's too late now, but if you sold that piece of property, Mayor, for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars more than...
That's almost a percent, absolutely.
May I have your assurance in front of everybody that that money will be applied toward a retention program?
I, well, I, I'm only one vote, so I can't, I can't...
May I have your assurance of your proposal?
I would suggest that we, we, we take a look at that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Officer Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I'm glad you're here.
I'm not here as an officer.
Oh, okay, well, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I'm glad you're here today, uh, and I was the one that made the comment last week and hoping that whoever it was would come forward. And the reason why I did, because there were several officers also emailed and said that they were not a part of that letter, and that they were perfectly happy. And so I wanted to see who it was that actually wrote the letter, I really would have...
I'm, I'm aware of one, Commissioner, do you know of any others?
Excuse me?
I'm aware of one.
Uh, yes, there's more than one.
Okay.
Uh, and, and as I looked at the letter, there were at least two things in there that I agreed with you on. I think a lot of the other stuff had been left out, would have probably been more beneficial and made a better impact. And the one thing was, I agree that the deputy chief position needs to be filled, I, I agree with you on that one. Uh, and, um, there was a hundred and twelve officers that we should have, the chief asked for two additional officers because of the growth of our city, and, and I believe he needs those two officers. And so I'm not in favor of only hiring a third of those and leaving others vacant, uh, if we need them. Uh, I appreciate the fact that our police department, um, patrols our city and takes care of its citizens and solves crime, and so I wouldn't want to lessen the number of officers, but would rather give him the two additional officers that he asked for. Uh, and so, so those two items in your, uh, letter, I, I agree with. I, I understand the, the fact that you, you really want the merit paid, and it's not that we are taking it away, all we're saying is that based on our budget this year, that we're not able to give the merit that you're desiring this year. And all we're asking is you to work with us and let's be team players, and allow us to get through this budget year and see what next year looks like, because we don't want to be fighting against one another, we want to work together. And if we are working together and pulling the load the same way, we'll do that. Uh, you just heard the guy from Public Works, he came in and he's saying that they, they want a raise too. So it wouldn't be fair to play partiality towards one department when we value all of our employees. And so we would like to be able to give all of them a merit raise. And so we, we're asking if you'll be a team player, work with us, allow us to get through this year, and let's see what next year looks like.
Well, Commissioner, with all due respect, I, I think something very similar was said two years ago, and we had a one-year pause in which, let's be honest, somebody in this room got a big raise, and here we are in the third year, fighting the same battle. So, again, respectfully, I, I, that's a politician's promise and it...
Well, I'm not a politician, I'm a servant.
As am I, as am I, and I don't make false promises.
And neither do I.
So I, I, I take back my ability to table to the end, so I want to empathize a little bit, I, I want to empathize a little bit on both sides here, and just lay the, the groundwork of how we've gotten to where we've gotten thus far, right? So going into our budget workshops, again, that to me personally is our time to air this stuff out. And I've heard, I've heard what you've said in terms of communication, there was a general unawareness, again, if that's a top-down messaging issue, or if that's just general awareness, there was a miss because we're having this conversation now, not during the budget workshops. Because during the budget workshops, we should have been saying, hey, man, if, if we're not, if we're not doing these merit increases commiserate to what our benchmark cities and other agencies are doing, we stand to not even, we stand not to be able to fill positions, we stand to attrite additional positions, et cetera. So that time, we've missed that opportunity, and we're here today. The, the, the comment from Narette earlier, um, I, I disagree, and here's why. What was it about, I'm sorry? The, the idea that a general employee is the same as a police employee, which is the same as a fire employee, I fundamentally disagree, there's high-risk components to police and fire. So much so, I, you know, and last night I actually went for a ride-along during the night shift on a, on a, a police patrol last night, and it was eye-opening, just the sheer volume and, and variances of the types of calls and the, and the, and the positions that you all are put in, the environments that you all not only work in but thrive in for our city is, is something to be said. I get how the administration has come up with the one percent COLA, because they're trying to deal with a, a revenue shortage that we haven't seen in recent years. Um, so it's, it's a mechanism to say, okay, how do we start to at least give the employees something? And here we are again, there was comments last week, there's comments by yourself, comments from the, the previous speaker on, in terms of merit. And I, and I disagree that we have to stay where we're at right now between now and September ninth. I think there's, there's room for us to put a little bit more in terms of a merit in addition to the COLA that we've already budgeted for. Again, if you take, and again, we have to remember, like in the letter too, when, when we talk property taxes and, and new developments coming in, that stuff takes some time to come onto the rolls. Uh, when you really look at it, the average home that would come on the rolls, and we probably average maybe four, four hundred and fifty COs on a good year that come onto our tax base, we're not talking about a whole bunch of money, and it's quite the inverse relationship. We invest almost sixty percent in public safety, whereas our, our ad valorem property tax revenue only comprises maybe twenty percent, less than that. So it's a kind of an inverse relationship, so anytime that we just say across the board, we're going to get six percent pay increase, you almost have to grow your property tax base by twelve percent or more. But again, just factually speaking, but I think at the end of the day, what we're asking for is some certainty. But I think at the end of the day, what we're asking for is some certainty, long-term certainty. You know, I think some of the drivers of this was, I think, when the mayor had done some stuff to inspect the pension program, I think there was some, some concern there, some, maybe some misinformation, you know, about the motives of that exercise. But again, that would have to come before council for any sort of approval before that would take shape as well. So that combined with the situation that we're currently in has caused some uneasiness or unsettled nature to, to the, to the employees. But I think, you know, if you look at the general employee pool and if you look at the public safety high-risk positions, if you even did another percent for general and another two percent for public safety, you're looking at about six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars that we would need to go and find between now and September ninth. I think that personally is doable. I think that we had some bloat in some of the software systems that we had decided about asset management, some of these other things, that I think there's some opportunities for us to find some dollars. But I think that we can do something if we all put our heads together. Long-term strategy, I think it's a strategy conversation. It's what is our merit policy, what's our COLA policy? Because that's kind of, we haven't really done COLA here in past years, it's been more of that merit system. So is there a happy medium between setting a certain COLA percentage to make sure that people have confidence and assurance that they're going to get something year over year? And then how do you build merit on top of that? That's in a reasonable spot that you have confidence as a council on us that we act as your kind of quasi-union without having union representation? Because I think that at the end of the day, that's going to add a layer of complexity and negotiations that I don't think any part, any side of this, this table wants to deal with. Not deal with, but have to enter into, because I think it's a, it's a mutually supportive relationship that we need to have. And that's, that's where we have to get to. But I think where we're at right now, as late in the game, I would position ourselves to add another one percent for general, two percent for public safety on top of the COLA that we already have, find that additional six-hundred-and-fifteen K, give or take, because I'm using large numbers here, and, and go that route. And so if there's other speakers that come up, you can challenge that notion, agree with that notion, it's up for debate. But that's where I stand, at least personally.
I may be the only one, but I agree that we could probably bypass a collective bargaining, the costs that are associated with that, the red tape that's associated with that, if we could just have constructive conversations rather than being caught off guard one year and then two years later. Thank you.
Members of the council, can I advise you on one thing? If there are other members of the police department who wish to speak as part of their public comment, they have the right to do so. I don't want to jump ahead to what was going to be the city attorney's presentation, but I want to advise you to allow them to have their public comment, but not necessarily to participate in any further debate because the matter has been already brought before the public employees, before PERC, for potential organization of the, of the members of the police department. So I don't want to begin with any statements that are done by the council, especially at a point here where council, they're not taking, you're not taking any action to the, to the agenda, so there's no action to be held. But the matter's already moved to the state for a potential organization by the employees. So I would advise, allow the public to speak, listen to their comments, and then move on to the next, to the next speaker without engaging in any back and forth because I do not want any statements that may be able, that may be prejudicing the city when this, since this matter's already before PERC.
All right. Robert Campbell.
After the last conversation, I'm going to actually yield my time back to you and just say that I really do hope that you follow through with what Commissioner Becker has said. And I think that he is really working for the employees, so I yield my time.
Jefferson Wertz.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for listening to me. I'm not going to take four minutes. I just want to say one thing about the general employees. Respect them, love them, but as you see I'm dressed right now, I've got a bulletproof vest on. I go out, and you rode with me last night, you see what we get into. We go from zero to ninety to back to zero in a matter of a blink of an eye. So to loop, to take all the police department and fire department and loop them in with general employees, to me is a travesty. Second of all, I have a physical fitness requirement, they don't. And for me to be looped into that, where I've got to maintain my physical fitness and then for somebody to come up here and say I sit in the office, again, it just, it rubs me the wrong way. Thank you.
Okay, we have Jeff Condello.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Jeff Condello, owner of Randall. We have a construction, mostly construction companies. We are located at three-three-zero-seven Clarkona Road here in the city of Apopka. And we employ about fifteen-hundred people from that location. Around five-hundred of them, or I think around four-hundred of them are on that property. And we employ well over three-hundred people that work, sorry, that live in Apopka. So I want to thank the Apopka city staff for working closely with us and helping us through the, the construction and the great things that we're doing down there on the thirty acres that we, that we live on there at our headquarters there in the city of Apopka. And so I want to thank them, it's been a pleasure to work with them, they work closely with us. What we're doing down there is, what I'm here to talk about is we're doing a school, it's called Randall Academy. And it's, it's in conjunction with Orange County Public Schools. It's only the second time that they've ever done this in the history of Orange County Public Schools. And we're, so we're, we're starting off with ten students. And we just interviewed them over the last couple of weeks. And so we've, we've picked ten students that are going to attend the school starting, I think, I think August twenty-fifth. And they showed up with their parents, and they, the kids showed up, and they're very excited and very passionate about attending the school. And we're all excited on the campus there, we're going to have a mentoring program for them. And so they're going to spend half their day doing academics and the other half working on our campus, learning accounting, purchasing department, plumbing, electrical, fire protection. We do precast concrete, we do site work, we do a lot of different things that they can learn and be a part of on the other half of their day. It just gives them something different to look at with their, with their lives and where they're going. And I think we can really help them and impact the students, so we're really excited about doing that. So, and we're happy to do that in the city of Apopka. And we appreciate, again, the staff working closely with us and getting this done. So we expect to get our CO this week there. So, and it's all been expedited, so we've kind of rushed it along and deal with the COVID-nineteen and everything. So we worked through some obstacles and, again, appreciate everybody working with us. So what I'm here to talk about is, is when, after I, after I did the, I put over half a million dollars in the building, I bought the building, and then we invested over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in fixing the building up for the kids and making it like brand-new for them to come into and, and attend school. And so I received an invoice from the, from the city building department for, for the impact, sorry, for the permit fee, which I was fine with. And then I, then I received some impact fees of fifty-two thousand dollars for the school. And it was a shock to me, and I didn't plan on it. And so the part of the fees, the fire and the, the police, this is appropriate for, for the conversation here this evening, I'm happy to pay those. Very happy to pay those, appreciate definitely the first responders and all they do for the city of Apopka and for, for the public in general. But the, there's a traffic impact fee of forty-three thousand dollars. And I don't think that's fair and reasonable. It's, it's not, all we're going to have is a bus with ten kids that's going to show up and three teachers that are going to be there. And so there's not going to be any traffic impact. There was actually, I think, ten to fifteen people that were working at the building when, when I bought it. So we're actually going to be actually less on the traffic if you look at it that way. And so I ask, respectfully ask, to have the, the traffic impact fee of forty-three thousand dollars eliminated, or at least greatly reduced. And I would appreciate that. And the other thing that I'm going to do there is I'm going, there's a road that comes down, it's a private road. We're going to fix that road and pave it all the way up to Clarkona, Okoye Road there, down to the school. And so we're going to, you know, we've really fixed the building up, and we just bought another ten acres there that we're going to do a lot of things on, that we're going to work closely with the city of Apopka on. So I think we're good citizens for the community and we really look forward to impacting and helping, being more involved in the Apopka community, which we've done here recently with, through reimagined communities, we've gotten involved and helped us out. We've been, we've gotten involved, done a book bag for the kids, two-hundred kids. And so we're, we're looking forward to being more involved in the community as we grow as a company. And so we intend to keep going, and so with that said, I'll open up any questions.
Michael, you want to talk to us about the impact fees and?
Well, impact fees are statutorily mandated and then approved by, by code. And the impact fees are based on, there's a formula that is done to calculate what are the impact fees based on the uses they're done. I do not believe this council has the authority to waive impact fees. There's, there's just no authority to do so. The impact fees are part of, for lack of a better term, it's the cost of doing business. And therefore, the council does not have the authority to waive impact fees under your statute, under both the statute and your code.
So can I respond to that? This, this isn't a business, it's a donation, that I'm donating this building and everything in the building for the youth, for the, for the young adults in the community, for Apopka and Orange County.
OCPS would still have to pay it. So we, I just, we just opened up the CF Prep Academy out on, is it Marden Road? I mean, it's obviously quite a bit bigger, sixty-six thousand square feet. And their total impact fees were six-hundred-and-six thousand dollars for a school. It's a nonprofit, private school. So, I mean, it, it, it doesn't matter, you know, OCPS. I think we have an agreement, there's, some of the fees are waived, I want to say with OCPS, but I'm not-
Not sure with, for the, for the specific agreement?
Transportation, yeah.
No, but there's still, there's certain requirements. And impact fees are basically statutorily mandated in order to, to ameliorate the impact-
Right, right.
-that a development has upon the city's services and for that development to pay for its impact on the services. And those figures are statutory, there's a formula, it's formula that is, that is established and, and set. And the council does not have the authority to waive them.
The only, the only question I would have as it relates to the traffic impact fees, I know that the police and fire, we, it's pretty much the sound formula there. In terms of traffic, is there any guidelines there to having that lessen due to if the applicant can prove, to Mr. Randall's point, that, you know, the, the lack of true impact that might happen as a result of this particular construction?
That would have been done at the time of whatever type of development approval, then a traffic study would have been done. So if you, if a traffic, usually in a way to negotiate or to minimize or what, to determine what the impact fees are, you know, most developers have your traffic impact statements. And therefore, you're going to then adjust or try to find your equivalent uses to show that your impacts are less. And then you take those impacts and you apply them to the formula for what derives of the fee. But if that's what we was, the impact fees are based on what was presented, and that's what it's calculated at, there really isn't any. The only way, theory around it is, again, if a developer or property owner decides to undertake certain improvements to benefit the city, then they're eligible for impact fee credits because they've paid for the improvements that would have had to have been done, performed by the city. And therefore, you'll get a credit for that, for performing those that work on behalf of the public.
Kind of like what Amazon's doing, yeah.
Correct, or any other ones where you have impact fee credits or you're also payment upfront, a proportionate share, where you're making a certain payment in order to, to basically alleviate your proportionate share of the impact of your development on the city's infrastructure. In this case, it would be transportation. So without having the exact details in front of me of, so what was the basis for the amount of the impact fees that were charged base, but it would still be, again, based on what are the standard rates for impact fees that are established by ordinance and they apply to, to all properties? That's what the impact is, and there is no mechanism under the ordinance for, for a waiver of such.
Okay, but this is an existing building. And again, all that's going to be going down there is a bus with ten kids in it. So how is it impacting the traffic?
Without this, without this going any further, we're currently in a public comment, so the council cannot take any action, so there, there is no further discussion, that's going to merit a decision.
We can talk about if there's any other options at this point, but I, you know, be happy to do that.
Awesome.
Well, I'd still like to invite you all down to the grand opening.
That'd be great, thank you.
We'll have that, and we'll make sure we get all your invitations to come down.
Super, thank you.
All right, and last but not least, Victor Ellis.
Hey, good evening, it's, good evening, it's Victor Ellis. I'm a longtime resident at Martin Place, twenty-plus years. And I'm here because of the special assessment for taxes for the damaged drainage pond, I think it is.
Do we do that public comment during that piece of business?
Right, if it's an item that's on the agenda.
Wait till we get to that. Yes, sir, yeah, yeah. Now, you can hear the presentation, then, and then, yep, thank you. Okay, awesome. All right, anybody else from public wish to speak on it? All right, we'll close that public hearing. All right, move on to the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? Have not looked for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Business, designate a chair for the professional auditing service evaluation committee, Jamie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Jamie Roberson, Finance Director. Before you today, we have a professional auditing services and evaluation committee request by statute. The statute recently changed in the last couple of years. And this committee has to be chaired by a person from the elected candidate area and be, at a minimum, be presented with three total members. So administrative selection was provided for the two remaining members for the appointment to the committee, which is another finance director from the city of Avito who lives in this area. His name is Mr. Jerry Boop. And a local resident who is a CPA in the city of Apopka, named Mr. Steve LaRoe. And then we would like you guys to make a selection for who will be the chairman of this committee for the audit, audit RFP. This RFP is an RFP to select our auditors who will do our financial audit for the city.
Don't everybody jump.
Did you have somebody in mind that you wanted to draw names from a hat? I'm more than happy to raise my hand if you-
Go ahead, go for it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would be willing to as well. I know you, you have the, like, Apopka Natural Gas kind of task extra on you. And Alexander, I know you represent the state. But again, I'm, I'm game for whatever.
More than happy to yield.
Okay, so want to make a motion, Mr. Smith?
I'll remove the Commissioner Bankston, we'll serve as chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, do we need a motion for the other two, or are they just automatic approvals?
You need to approve them.
Yes, okay, need a motion, I hope everybody had a chance to look at, yeah, just so it happens, Jerry Boop, although doesn't live in Apopka, lives, has an Apopka address. And then Steve LaRoe has been a member of Chamber and good guy here in Apopka. So need a motion to approve.
Just for the record, I really enjoyed reading Steve's.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when I asked Steve for a resume or a bio or something, he was like, I didn't need one for the last four decades, so is this okay? I was like, yeah, this works just fine.
Okay, motion approved.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Jamie. Next up, public hearing, ordinance number twenty-seven forty-two.
Ordinance number twenty-seven forty-two. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural and county industrial to city industrial for certain real property generally located west of North Orange Blossom Trail and north of, north of Hawkshead Road owned by American- owned by American Sanford Four LLC, Stephen R. Rubrite JP, JP Holdings, Inc., Rubrite Properties LLC, Rubrite Family LP, JP Holdings, Inc., and James Scott Pridgen, Douglas and Lisa Surratt and James P. Purdy, comprising 349.37 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay. Who's, no changes, all right. Anybody from the council? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion from the council.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's jump over to ordinance number 2780. This was, is the sister to the one we just heard, 2742. So Susan, if you'd read ordinance number 2780, please, ma'am.
So ordinance number 2780. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to planned development PD for certain real property generally located west of North Orange Blossom Trail and north of Hogshead Road, comprising 349.37 acres, more or less, owned by American Sanford Four LLC, Stephen R. Rubrite JP Holdings, Inc., Rubrite Properties LLC, Rubrite Family LP, James Scott Pridgen, Douglas and Lisa Surratt and James P. Purdy, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Jim, I know we've got just a little, small little tweak to this one.
We got a small tweak. This is on the ordinance itself, under section 1A. This is a clarification of language. This is what we're recommending to clarify that it's an overall PUD, but within that PUD, when we get developers coming in, they're going to take different sections of the PUD and, and do sub-PUDs within that. If they don't, if they need additional information for that particular development, this is where they can do a separate PUD within the master PUD, master plan itself. So we're looking at clarifying this as a separate PUD agreement, AKA the development agreement, for any relevant portion of the PD development plan will be required to be provided at the time of each minor or major development plans in the middle. Basically, we might end up having 30 different developers coming in this 349 acres, or we might have three or four, but we want to make sure that they're handled separately from the master PUD.
The only question I have, legally speaking, I asked the same one during the last term, is any subsequent PD would still go by the mandate that only light and heavy industrial is part of the project? I just want to clarify that.
Yep, that covers the whole, if one person comes in and takes 35% of it for heavy industrial, that's it.
Okay.
Unless they came back and got anything amended. Any other questions?
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is, you know, if you have a smaller PD and they're doing a little bit, they can't go back and then say, oh, we want residential as part of this one, or we're keeping it the master.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2780 with the, the minor adjustment there is, is on the screen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2776.
Okay. Ordinance 2776. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agriculture to industrial for certain real property located east of Clerkona Road and north of Stone Road, comprising 5.85 acres, more or less, and owned by 3307 South Clerkona LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, any changes, Jim?
No changes.
All right, okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion from the council to approve ordinance number 2776.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2777.
2777. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG Agricultural District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located east of Clerkona Road and north of Stone Road, comprising 5.85 acres, more or less, and owned by 3307 South Clerkona LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance, adopt ordinance number 2777.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2787.
Okay, so 2787. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Apopka by amending Chapter 26 Cemeteries, Section 26-4 fees, by creating Chapter 26, Section 26-13 Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Okay. Susan, any changes?
Okay, so there, there were a few clarifications that were made on this ordinance. Everybody should have a red line of that.
Okay.
Mostly additions to just clarify, clarifications on, on wording, mostly. And we did have a discrepancy in the first ordinance that said we had 1,900 for a double intermittent non-resident space, but it's 1,800, so we've corrected that.
Any questions about the changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the amended ordinance number 2787.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2020-16.
Okay, resolution?
Ms. Mayor, it's a resolution, not an ordinance.
Okay. Resolution number 2020-16. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection on a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Martin Place Phase Two Neighborhood Improvement District in the city of Apopka to fund emergency repair services, facilities, and programs maintaining and upkeep of the common property to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with section 1.197.3632 per N3, per N.A., Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Vavreck.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you basically is a resolution for the creation of a special assessment area. For clarification, we do have a resolution going on for two readings. One was to allow the public to have enough interest to come in and address you, should they so elect to do that. So it's a little bit out of the ordinary that we normally do two readings of resolution, but I wanted to give a day and a night meeting so everybody got their opportunity to come in. Basically, the resolution is dealing with Phase Two where we had the failure of the retention pond. There is two phases to Martin Place, Phase One, which was the original phase that was developed, and then Phase Two. The pond did have, the ownership of the pond was by the homeowners association. That homeowners association was created in '07 of 1987, and then it moved to a dissolved category by the corporate Sunbiz Corporation tracker in '10, '11 of 1991. The city did at that time create a case on it for code enforcement violations. Unfortunately, because it was owned by the homeowners association, we had nowhere, nowhere else to go with it. So we, we did everything we could do on our side. The fees that are going to be assessed have not been published yet. All this is doing is notifying the state of our intent and the county and the property appraiser of our intent to create the assessment. After January, we'll have those figures, and they'll have to be published and put out to the public for a public hearing. So there will be a public hearing portion, and those fees will have to come back in front of you to be assessed at that time. Just make sure I got on my notes.
So the costs will all be transparent, you'll, I mean, obviously you'll.
They'll be clearly stated, and every property owner will be notified. I did, just so the council has some reassurance, I reached out to all the property owners trying to identify a homeowners association or who may have been involved with homeowners association. I got no response from that. We did finally locate somebody that used to be on the board years ago, but he's long since moved from there and been gone. And we've been working with him to try to resolve the, the ownership of the property in order to get it transferred into the city so we can make sure, henceforth, that it's taken care of. We also, before this meeting, I did send out a second notice that we were having a public hearing for the creation and the enabling resolution to create those assessments. I just want to make it clear, we've, we've reached out and tried to make proper notification to each property owner before the council makes any action on it. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Now that you say that, the only question I would have is, is the, the ultimate assessment only going to be on the Phase Two?
Correct.
Or would it be the entire Phase One and Phase Two? Because was it an umbrella HOA for the entirety? Okay.
Single, there's, there's two. The first phase didn't really have what they called an HOA, they had an architectural review board, and they would be separate because it was developed and run under a separate poll, not really even an HOA document, it just addressed architectural review. The second one actually did have an established HOA. So they would be totally separate. We do have to go address Phase One because that pond has not been taken care of either, but that'll be a whole separate.
That's right, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, yeah, we'll, we're going to take, come on up, sir. Do y'all want to speak as well? Okay. Did you fill out a card?
No.
Yes. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Victor Ellis, longtime resident at Martin Place, Phase Two. And I've had some conversations with Mr. Rever, Chuck Rever, and my concerns about it, and also I had sent him a couple emails, I haven't heard a response, which I understand, but at least it's on file, my, some of my concerns. And the reason I'm here is because I just, I oppose it, but I understand the need for it. And the reason I oppose it is because I don't think the city ever filed for any bids for the work. I was told that they used a current contractor to save money. That's my first concern.
Originally, or, or, on the fix?
For the repairs.
Okay, okay.
For the fix.
Okay.
Per Mr. Vavreck, there were no bids, used a current contractor to save cost. My other concern is the delays of the project with all the rain washouts. I've been there several times looking at it, and there's been a lot of rain washouts, and I think it's going to cause an added expense since it's been delayed for so long. If we have a hurricane come through, it's going to wash out again. And because of those washouts, I think it's going to cost more money. I don't know if that's the case or not. I don't know why it's taken so long to, to repair the pond. I know there was a lot of tires and garbage in that pond, because I had some photos of that. And my third concern is that the area in general is in very bad condition concerning code enforcement. Mr. Vavreck said that he's going to try to address those issues. My concerns are that because of the area being in such bad condition, you want to increase my property taxes, but the property values are going to go down because of the way the area looks. It's really extremely bad, in my opinion. There's unmown lawns, there's cars in the grass, there's four, or five, six cars in the yards, there's utility trailers, there's trash buildup in the yards, broken fences, there's a boat in Phase One, and in the yard, there's abandoned vehicles, there's one vehicle on the side of the house that I know it's not running. And then.
Could you, if you'd put that in an email to S. Brick, as in Steve Brick, so S. Brick?
SW Brick.
Oh, SW, is it SW? Okay.
They already have it, Mayor.
I've already.
Okay, okay.
I've had some emails back three or four years ago that I forwarded to Mr. Vavreck about the HOA, I mean, the code enforcement, the lack of code enforcement.
Okay.
And I know there, there's a neighbor down there that's actually being fined if he doesn't clean up his act.
Yeah.
Which, you know, it's understandable, but.
Mayor spoke to Lieutenant Brick two days ago, and he's fully aware of the situation, and he has a plan out of there.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
And then I think the last thing, oh, the last thing I think is, since we don't know the price, we don't know the assessment, like I said, I don't want to see the added expense because they're not getting the work done quick enough. And third and foremost, or finally, is the city needs to take some ownership themselves financially, since, you know, it's, it's, my impression is that you're going to take that project, whether it be 1.5 million or whatever, and assess it across 72 or Phase Two only, I think it is, that whole area benefits from it. But that's fine, but where's your financial responsibility for letting the area get to the situation it did and letting the pond get to the situation it did? That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Edward, do you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to give a little information if I could, and Chuck can, Vlad is here also for the, for the project. We can give an update on the project, where we are on the project and the cost related to the projects, and how it was an emergency situation because of where we were with the project, but we got good pricing. So we can, we can give you an update on the project and where we are construction-wise, and how the rain has delayed it, and, and COVID because of getting parts and stuff has delayed it, but we're getting close. I think, it's my understanding, within a couple, two or three weeks, we'll be done with the project.
We're better than the next four or two weeks.
Right, so.
We only have the grade remaining.
So I wanted to give that information. The other information I want to talk about, I, the, I don't, the number that you have, the 1.5 million, I don't know where you got that number, but the original.
That was if the road washed out on Vic Road.
Yeah, that, and the road, right, and that's why, that's why we reacted, because this project, this issue could have turned into a one, $2 million road project because it was continuing to cave in towards Vic Road. So that's why we addressed this, you know, right away. But I will tell you that when you see the numbers, when we come back with the numbers, the project was budgeted at 150, right at $150,000 for, to do the whole project. It was 150, so.
1.5, 150.
But it's $150,000. And I will tell you, when we come back with the numbers, we've looked at the project, there are some components that are city components, some of the lines that are going into the pond, we, we see some places where the city should have some responsibility for those. So when we come back with the numbers and everything for you, you'll be able to see that we'll make sure that, that if there's a city component, the city has, is taking care of that component, and then the component, the component that's, that's the responsibility of the HOA will be the piece that goes in those numbers. And I, and I'll tell you too, the other thing, so that you know, and this is, so you have the information, when those numbers come back, there'll be options. You know, we'll be able, of how that, those costs, we know that, we know that it's, it's too much to put on somebody all at one time. And so there'll be options of ways that we can amortize that cost, so it's not, it's not, so it's manageable. So.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming. Yes, sir. We need your name and, and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Alfonso Herrera. I'm one of the originals owners that lived there in Apopka Boulevard.
Right.
And I remember that when we had the HOA, we had a lot of problems, and we dismissed that. We dismissed that because the president or the vice president never did no improvements. And, and I really feel very strong that the city, from the moment that that HOA was dismissed, it was the responsibility of the city to take care of that problem. And I know that, I live in the far end where the pond is, and I know that I've been there for, well, I've been there for, I lived in 580, and then I moved to 597, which is the far house. The only problem that I see that that we have up there is one thing, it's the mosquitoes. I mean, they should have cleaned it out from the beginning. The city should have took all responsibility to that. I know that when it rains hard, the rain goes down and takes a lot of trash, and we decide it goes in there and take care of it. But for some reason, now y'all come to us and say, y'all the ones that have to pay for that. I don't think it's fair. I really don't feel fair, feel very good about it because most of those renters, they're lived in there, they're renters, and they don't care. And I know the, the responsibility is the ownership of the houses. But you got to understand that from the day one, Apopka, the city had the responsibility because they made those agreements.
Now, that's not, the pond is, is the responsibility of the homeowners association. And one of the things that we're working on now, and, and, I won't keep calling Chief Vaver, but anyway, Mr. Vaver is, is, you know, working on a program for street lighting and, and as, as a, for neighborhoods, and then you can add our stormwater, or, you know, our stormwater ponds and maintenance of those into this MSBU, which is a small taxing unit, for communities just like yours where you don't have a, a strong HOA or a no, or nonexistent one, so that it gets taken care of and it gets put onto your tax bill versus trying to collect the money from each and every individual homeowner. So we, we hope to get, as we start to ramp this up, and we're going to have a couple of these lighting agreements here, you'll see. And the next step then would be to add stormwater retention ponds and the maintenance of those in these, these same units, these MSBUs, a taxing authority, so that it takes the burden off you as a, you know, trying to manage a homeowners association that doesn't want to pay their, their dues. And so we're hoping to get that in the next six to nine months, have a program in that would, obviously, I can't, I can't go back and solve, you know, your problem from, from years ago, but, you know, we're trying to, as we move forward and get into a situation where we can take care of that for you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, for the, for the benefit of the public, I think it's important to, to know, even though the HOA has been administratively dissolved, and in essence, there's nobody really, really captaining the ship. This HOA was actually created prior to the creation of Chapter 720 Florida Statute, so it's actually governed as a nonprofit corporation under Chapter 617. So we have to treat it as disposition of corporate property. And that, that stormwater, the retention area is actually the private property of a dissolved corporation. The obligations of maintenance do not automatically fall on a local government because a corporation is, is dissolved. It is still private property of a corporation. We have been working to locate the two named officers. A dissolved corporation still has the ability to dispose of its property, but we need the proper authorization of the officers of that dissolved corporation. And we're actually trying to do that in order to find a way for the dissolved corporation to actually dispose of the property so that the city can at least attempt to, to conduct maintenance. So we are working on that. But just because the HOA is dissolved does not mean that, that, just because a private property is abandoned does not mean that it automatically becomes the obligation nor the property of the local government. It still remains private property, and that property owner still has property rights just like any other homeowner or any other property within the city.
Well, one of the main things, we as, as a city, take a consideration that where is, whatever the amount to be to clean that pond, have a consideration to, most of those, at this present time, half of those neighborhoods' residents are not working because of the virus. And one of the things I know that January, February, wherever, whenever the time is, is something to, you ought to think very seriously because there, most of them don't work.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And, and one of the things, I mean, y'all can put down whatever the amount is, but, you know, and I know that what you're thinking is that we're going, we can pay for twenty or ten years or fifteen years. Make it the longest.
Yeah.
Make it for the longest.
Yes, sir.
That way, it'd be a shorter, whatever the decision is.
Smaller amount of money, yes, sir.
Make it, make it for the longest where it'd be a small amount that the taxpayers will pay. Because, I mean, it's nothing wrong to be, to have everything cleaned up in the neighborhood. But I believe that the city had an obligation to follow up. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that y'all, but, you know, I'm talking about, I was there when I bought that first house in 1984.
Yes, sir.
And I know that it needs improvement. I need, I know it needs lights. I know that the trees need to be trimmed because when the city, city trash truck comes in there and knock all those limbs and leaves and everything, you know, that don't help much. That don't help much on that pump and that pond up there, you know?
Thank, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else who wants to speak on that? Chuck, you want to kind of follow up? Just finish?
And Mayor, just for clarification...
Oh, I'm sorry, is one more, somebody? Does somebody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am, come on down. Yeah, I'm sorry. Just need your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Freeman. I would like to state...
And your address, please.
Oh, 583 Martin Place Boulevard. I have moved into that community in 1998. I never heard of an HOA when I lived there. Never was one approached me, a collection asked of me. And before I moved in, my mother had that house. They never approached her for an HOA fee as well. So I feel that it is unfair, like the other residents have mentioned, to put that burden on us to take care of that retention pond since it went so long unkept. It is a lot of trees that have built up in that area for many years, even before that new elementary school was put there. So to watch it deteriorate over those years and never, you know, take care of it, and you say it is the private property responsibility, I believe you said, the people that originally built that community? I am on furlough since April 1st. This would be another hardship for me. I've recently buried my father. I just recently buried my brother-in-law. This would be a hardship to put on me when it was never approached me for an HOA fee and went all these years unkept. There are so many trees in my neighborhood along my street that are just hanging in the street that's unkept by the city. It's not very well lit. A lot of times I worry in my neighborhood how dark it is. There's so many cars that park on top of the grass. There's a lot of high schoolers that park in our neighborhood because they don't want to pay the fee to park at the high school. They just park in our neighborhood, leave their car there, go to school, come back. So it's a lot of things that I feel that there's a lack of code enforcement that's being done, and I just want to say, I hope that they do consider the hardship that, that this would put on the residents since many of us are dealing with this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Vaver?
Just for clarification, the last speaker was speaking, she lives in Phase One. We're not addressing Phase One at the current time. I have reached out to those individuals trying to see if they do have a board, but that's not part of what's being heard tonight, just so council has a clear understanding. I have worked with Chief McKinley. He is aware of the code enforcement violations. They are working to go through. I, being over code enforcement for so many years, I do notice them when I was in there checking on the pond and where we stand. So they are working on it. It's, it is a long, drawn-out process, but they are taking action as fast as they can to, to address some of those violations, so you understand that. I did speak with Vladimir, and they are on, on schedule to get done within the next two to three weeks, so hopefully we'll have that pond resolved. With regards to the cost in the bidding, that was an emergency purchase. The city did use an existing contract that it had with another, with, with the building company or a, a construction company to make those repairs. That was to save time and effort on the city's behalf, so we didn't have to do the long, drawn-out process in a, in an emergency situation, just so it's clear to the council. With that, if the council has any more questions or concerns...
No, I, I think the points of, I've already been stressed, and that's to say, had it gone further, we would be talking about a much higher burden of cost to both Martin as well as the people that would have been impacted by pipe clogs, pipe bursts, flooding, all that sort of washout that could have occurred. One of the comment, I wanted to touch on too, is, you know, depending on where the tree location is too, all of those trees would be at the responsibility of homeowners, homeowners association in terms of trimming, making sure that's nuisance-free, that sort of stuff. Now, we would come in from a, like a sidewalk if roots are, you know, causing that to bow.
And that particular development doesn't have sidewalks.
Right. And, you know, me personally, you know, driving by that location on Vic Road, the only thing that told me to think anything otherwise was that kind of cave-in and sudden erosion there. And that's, and I'm assuming that's when staff inquired more on that particular topic, so.
Yeah. Phase One doesn't have sidewalks. Phase Two does have some sidewalks, but generally between the backside of the sidewalk and the roadway generally becomes the, the city's property for easement purposes. And then from the sidewalk to the house is the homeowner. So depending on where those trees are at, it can be the individual, the property owner's responsibility for the maintenance of those trees.
And then, in all fairness to the gentleman's point too, how long out can you schedule that, that assessment?
We're looking at it right now, and as soon as we get the final figures, I've talked with Edward, and we're talking fifteen, possibly twenty years. We're, we're going to be as fair as possible, but again, those final figures do come back before the board, and the council makes that final decision to, to make sure that you feel the same way we do. And again, we, we're not trying to take advantage of the property owners. We're trying to work with them and resolve the situation of the pond. As, as Michael's explained to you, it's, it's in a corporate's name, so we're having to do some footwork to get it switched to the city because the corporation does have rights, just like a property owner has rights. So we're, we're working on that, and, and we will retitle those, those ponds will be re-titled to the city. We'll take further action in maintaining them here on out, and if, if the homeowners in that particular developments want to recreate an HOA, we'll be more than happy to sign them back over to them to take over that maintenance. So it, it'll be left to those property owners if they want to create that HOA again.
Are there any of the trees that are on city right of way at all that can be addressed?
Off the top of my head, I've wrote through both developments. I do not know of any of those trees being in the city right of way, but I will go out there and double-check for you, Commissioner.
And of course, the, I guess, the, in a difficult situation, the one-plus side is there's not been homeowners fees that have been, have been paid for several years. So now it's an ouch because now suddenly it's hitting, but if we spread that out, then it'll make it much easier to bear. And also, that's going upon, upon the homeowner, not the renter. However, the homeowner, you know, they may try and pass that along, so...
And the property appraiser's role was used to notify each property owner. So if it's a rental property, if it had a mailing address for the property owner, that's where the notice went to, to the property owner, not the, the renter.
And so, again, unfortunately, we weren't here back then, but we can do something now, and, and we're working to try and resolve this in the best way, keeping it more spread out for payments and making it much more feasible in that way. And then also pursuing as we can legally, then the city then taking it on. And as you said, then if they do want to create a new homeowners association, that'll be up to the residents there, so.
And, and so you understand, I want to make it clear, there will be a capital portion to this, and then there'll be a, an annual maintenance for us to, to cut that pond thereafter. So you'll have a capital portion for whatever we decide to run that figure over, and then after that, there'll be a small portion on the, on an MSBU for the continued maintenance and cutting of that pond, so we don't get back in the situation 20 or 30 years from now.
And when did the homeowners, homeowners association go?
It was created in 1990, or 87, and dissolved in 1991.
So there's been no homeowners association fees collected since 91 until now? So, I mean, if that's on one side, if that, you know, eases just a little bit, obviously this is a difficult thing. Thankfully, it was caught before it became a much bigger problem there, and so we stay sensitive to those needs.
And let me ask you, even if the trees are hanging over the roadway, is still the homeowner's responsibility?
Yes, sir. If, if the tree's on their property, if, if, if we were to determine that it is an imminent threat and it's over the roadway, the city could go up and cut it, but I, you know, we were, we're going to have to look at each tree on a one-to-one basis. We just don't go in and cut people's trees.
No, I, I guess my concern was, i- if it's our sanitation trucks that's going through there to pick up trash and it's tearing up the top of the truck.
And generally, when that situation does, sanitation department or public services notifies us and code enforcement works to resolve it, but we address those on a one-to-one basis.
Okay. Good enough.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. With that, look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-16.
So move.
Got motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution Number 2020-17.
Resolution 2020-17. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the uniform ad valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Oaks at Kelly Park Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka to fund street lighting services, facilities, programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue in accordance with Section 197.3632, Pren. 3, Pren. A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for ineffective aid.
All right, before you go, I want to, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Vaver, because this was his brainchild back when he was, how many years ago?
A long time ago.
Long time ago. You know, because we, we talk about, you know, budgets, and, and for me, I want to look at legacy costs, the, the costs that keep creeping up every year, and there's no, there's no end in sight. And so there's the three of them that we, we're now addressed or will, will address. One is, back in 2011, we addressed the retirement medical, which is, you know, we just added $5 million to the liabilities on the city's books because of the increased medical liability cost for retirees of Apopka. The second one we just, we just finished here just a few minutes ago was the cemetery cost. Cemetery is running at a minimum of $50,000 loss every year. So we've got, got it in place that within the next 20 years, that will be, that will be taken care of. And the third is the street lighting within neighborhoods, is that we as a city have picked up all the costs for streetlights in neighborhoods forever, and as we add these new, all these new neighborhoods, that cost, and I think Edward and I just did a real kind of back-of-the-napkin number, what, $600,000?
Right around $600,000.
Is what we're paying for street lighting within these neighborhoods. You know, and that's, and every neighborhood you add without this, these kind of agreements is another $5,000, $3,000, or $7,000, $10,000. So I, I think, you know, the problem, you know, we all look for immediate solutions, and these are not immediate solutions, but long-term, this will get us into a financial, you know, stable position that we can, we can move forward with. And so, you know, it's just, it's, it's kind of neat, you know, what goes around, comes around. We, we appreciate having Mr. Vaver back to, to, to dust off his, his ordinance, and here he is today, you know, presenting it to us. So with that, Mr. Vaver?
Basically, what you have in front of you, again, is another enabling ordinance, or excuse me, enabling resolution. This is creating a special district for the Oaks at Kelly Park. Oaks Kelly Park came through to the council in a planning development several months ago. It's actually has some houses being built in there, but we have reached out to the developer, and the developer has provided us with a letter requesting that the council consider putting this into an MSBU for future street lighting cost. Those costs will be assessed against the ad valorem tax bill when it goes out. Basically, what we do is we take the, the street lighting bill, and then we divide it amongst all the residential properties within there, and then we'll pay the bill, but that money will go into a trust that cannot be spent except for street lighting, and that money will then be used to spend, or to pay for the cost of the street lighting within that particular development. We are looking at, in the future, and I've worked with community development, in the future, we'll actually start running these through when you see the development plan come through in the future. You won't have all these caught up on, on the far end. I'm just trying to catch up where they're at with future development. So each of these coming through, they're, they're in the next three or four meetings, you'll see some of the older stuff coming through, and then we'll move it into where they come through with the, the development as they come before the board.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, my question was, is that you're going to get the bill, and we're going to divide it among the number of homeowners. What about maintenance?
The, the maintenance is actually part of the bill. When we get, when we get an electric bill for all streetlights, we pay, the street poles don't belong to us, lights in the poles don't belong to us. We actually pay for maintenance on each one of those poles. So it is part of the bill.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I just love this approach to it. It is a sustainable financial model, and it, again, the user is the one that, that takes the cost of that so it doesn't mount up on others. And again, it, as you said, if we keep doing that eventually down the road, we're going to be in a heap of trouble. So this is a great plan. Thank you.
Yeah, and the only question I have, we touched on it on Monday when we talked,
is just precedents. There's other municipalities that have this model and go with that.
Orange County does it. Actually, the City of Vito, they actually spread it across every property owner in the whole city. They just take, take it all and divide it throughout the whole thing. But I don't think the council's at that point at this particular time. I think we address where we're at and going to the future, and then maybe at a future date, we can see where we're at and maybe address it as a whole.
And one of the other things we want to look at is, down the road, is what Orange County does, is not only streetlights, but stormwater retention ponds. They had that, because you have a homeowner association that's inactive, you can take care of the streetlights and that, the retention pond, keeping it mowed, keeping it, you know, up, you know, up to, you know, the code with that, an MSBU, so that it's, because what happens is, when you get a real bad economy, the people quit paying their homeowner association dues. So what happens is sixty, seventy percent of the people are paying the other, their, their portion, plus the thirty percent that aren't paying, to keep the grass mowed and keep the lights on. This way, it's on your tax bill, so it will get paid. So...
And I was speaking with Jeff Weatherford, I think he's back there. And he has a lot of experience in this area. And he was mentioning, we were talking about lighting, and he had brought up the, you know, where they had had citizens in Houston, they were looking for street lighting. When they really talked with them, they were looking for more pedestrian lighting. And he just talked about the differences and some of the new technologies that are there. So I think he'll be able to really add a good piece to that puzzle.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty Dash Seventeen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, Bankson, and a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Eighteen.
All right. Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Eighteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Uniform Ad Valorem method of collection for a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Bridle Path Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka, to fund the street lighting services, facilities, programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and to the Florida Department of Revenue, in accordance with Section One Nine Seven Point Three Six Three Two, Pren. Three, Pren. A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Vavrick? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Aaron, I did make something clear. I just want to let the council know, we, we did write in the agreement with the developers that they're responsible till the MSBU comes on board, just so you all understand. They get that cost, and then when the MSBU kicks in, we get the cost.
So it should be next November?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance Number Twenty Twenty Dash Eighteen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Nineteen.
Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Nineteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting forth the city's intent to use the Florida Ad Valorem method of collection of a non-ad valorem assessment for properties lying within the Avian Point Street Lighting District in the City of Apopka, to fund street lighting services, facilities, programs, providing that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the property appraiser, tax collector, and the Florida Department of Revenue, in accordance with Section One Nine Seven Three Point Three Six Three Two, Pren. Three, Pren. A, Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Vavrick? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Nineteen.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance, Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Three. Jamie.
Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Three is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October One, Two Thousand and Nineteen, and ending September Thirty to Twenty Twenty, providing for a budget amendment.
Jamie Roberson, Finance Director. Before you, this budget amendment is to fund the appropriations for the repair to the traffic signal cabinet located at the intersection of Park Avenue and Lester Road that was damaged on August Sixteenth, Two Thousand and Eighteen by a vehicle that lost control. We did receive about thirty-one thousand dollars in insurance proceeds back in Two Thousand and Eighteen, so this amendment is actually coming from the reserves of the streets fund, so that we can go ahead and make that repair. The estimated cost was slightly increased from the original quotes in Two Thousand and Eighteen, from thirty-one thousand to about thirty-seven thousand. We've added a little cushion in the, in there for contingency in the event that something arises when they go to actually make the repair. The, this also includes an amendment to funding and appropriations for the Martin Road Developers Agreement. That is an agreement that we entered into several years ago for the improvements that were made at Martin Road. We only have about seven hundred thousand dollars left to pay off on it. And the development out to East Shore line, there's about six hundred and thousand dollars that we've already collected in impact fees. The good news is that with the payoff and what we've already collected in out to East Shore, that more, most likely, we will not have to make a stiff payment in Twenty Twenty One. So that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that Edward had changed in the budget at the last public hearing, we're estimating that we're not going to have to make that payment, that the impact fees are going to cover the cost of the balance due. So this takes me to have a full payoff of the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we have. And additionally, there is a Two Thousand and Nineteen Edward Byrne Memorial Jag Countywide Grant, that's a pass-through from Orange County for the Police Department for different supplies. This is an operational grant that the police file for every year. That is about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Three.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Four.
Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Four. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, calling a special election and a runoff as needed for the purpose of electing the city council member for seat two, providing for the qualifying period and election dates, authorizing city clerk to proceed with all election arrangements, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. So who's Michael or Susan? Susan?
Yeah. Like I said, I may say briefly, this is a resolution pursuant to, to Florida statutes, which basically memorializes what was pronounced in the proclamation at the last meeting. So therefore, this resolution now establishes the dates and the procedures and move, and begins the process for the special election for the vacancy of seat two.
Okay. Any questions?
No, just, just one quick comment. Commissioner Bankson, I'm willing to trade you, the Chair of the Audit Board, with the canvassing component of this, because the canvassing of the general election is going to be very, very time consuming.
Oh, boy. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty Four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports.
Well, obviously, I missed last time. We had a long-awaited vacation for my wife and I, which was very wonderful. And I unplugged, so I didn't hear about all the wonderful fireworks. And we had our national conference that I was a part of. So, I, I hesitated to speak earlier because of our recommendation by council. I guess my concern, I always, of course, have had a heart for our first responders and want to do what we can do, you know. I know that that is our heart. And I think, it kind of hit me like, you just got served with divorce papers, and you didn't even get asked to the counselor, you know. So I think for their, what I seem to hear was, they're not sure how to approach that. And it was a frustration that was boiling, and not sure who to come to. And, you know, as you said, I, I think that, hopefully, we can work together. I don't know where it is in the process now, but, so I held any comment due to what you said there. My concern for them was that, again, everything comes back on the table, and I don't want them to, you know, gain here and end up losing here as well. So, I think the heart is there for the city. This is a challenging time for us. And as you pointed out, we don't want to put that on the backs of the taxpayers, that many of them have lost jobs. We've already had to raise that. And I, you know, my concern was, is it enough? Because we have still variables. As of, you know, just yesterday, we still hadn't gotten our numbers to make those decisions on. But I do think there's some areas that we can look at, and I want to be sensitive to that. I agree. Well, I won't say anymore. One question that I would have on that is, one of the things that they were, that, that he was saying, was there certain amenities that other departments have? But is that really apples to apples? Are there not other things that we have, perhaps, in their retirement package that maybe those cities don't have? That's what I don't know, so I can't answer it intelligently. And maybe through this process, we can at least get some of that, maybe. Ed, I don't know if you're the one that I should talk to about that.
You know, let me, I guess one of the things I would like to say, I think, when you go back, we were the first city out of the gate to do workshops, to get a proposed budget. And so, a lot of them are still not even finished with, they, they had to do the millage by, you know, the end of last month, but they're not even to the point. So, yes, maybe it was, in that part, maybe it was faster than they thought it should be. But you still, you figure that was, what, the eighteenth of last month that we, so we, we still got until, you know, our second meeting in September to, to massage the budget. So a lot of these cities have not even started yet, started the process. And so, we're that far ahead. But we had, you know, here's the numbers we got, and here's how we got to the, you know, it's, I mean, there's no secret. As a matter of fact, I left the, the, the whole budget book, you know, which was, you know, five hundred pages long. I left it to PD, the, you know, when we, we got the anonymous letter. And I said, guys, take a look at this, you know, whatever, you know, whatever you see, you know, tell me, tell me what you would do different. So I, I, so I think we, we tried to be definitely open and transparent, but I think we've been so far ahead of everybody else on the curve as far as that, you know, the budgets. I mean, Edward and Jamie have been working nights and weekends to get us so much farther ahead without, with the, with the, with the understanding, we don't know where those numbers are going to be. And we won't know, I don't think we'll know in January where those numbers are going to be. I mean, I think a lot of it depends, you know, on, on a vaccine. What does that do? How fast does it come back? But, but if, if you're already laying off people at Disney after you've just reopened, that scares me. And so I think, as you know, the way I've, I've run our budgets, and Edward, you know, even more so than I have, we are going to be conservative in the budgets. And, and I don't want to, I don't want you to get a surprise that, you know, wow, where, where are we going to, what do we got to dip in the reserves for and now to pay for? So, I think we, you know, I feel like we've done a very good job as far as being open and transparent, and, and being on the front end of all the, you know, the turmoil, so that we've got more time to, to react and adjust based on, you know, new numbers coming in, better or worse. And so, you know, I, I'm a little discouraged that we, we didn't get the credit, or, you know, the finance team didn't get the credit for being way ahead of the curve as compared to all the other cities. And so, there, there are a lot of cities haven't yet, yet come, come up with any kind of numbers for pay raises even, to this day. So, anyway.
Well, again, it's a crazy year. And so, there may have been a little stumble on our communicating, being able to, and, and them having that feeling. But I think that's what they're saying is, does this city care about them and their future? And I think we do.
Yeah, sure.
And we do have time to address those things. So...
Yes.
I'm just hopeful that we're not put into a corner that will keep us from being able to work with that.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I enjoyed attending the Florida Legal Cities Conference.
From the, from the...
From the computer. I was a delegate to the Florida Legal City Conference, and it was held virtual this day, this year because of the pandemic. But they, they had a conference anyway. So I attended the Resolution Committee Meeting by virtual, by Zoom, on Thursday. And they thoroughly went through all of the resolutions and discussed them all, made a few tweaks here and there, but they all was presented at the annual meeting. I even saw our Finance Director on Zoom as well. So she did a great job representing the City of Apopka. And then on Friday, I attended the annual meeting, where the outgoing president gave his retiring address. Councilmember Isaac Sever from the town of Bay Harbor retired as the President and elected a new President, Tony Ortiz, the City Commissioner for the City of Orlando, is our new incoming President. And our first Vice President is Philip Walker, the Commissioner from Lakeland. And second Vice President is Jolene Caparello, City Woman, Councilwoman from Port St. Lucie. So they were all installed, and the meeting went well. They did the presentation of the Harris Drew Award that was given to the Mayor from Sanibel. And they recognized the Home Rule Heroes. And I would like for us to look and see if we can find someone to nominate next year for the Home Rule Heroes. It appeared that every city was represented except for Apopka.
Uh-oh.
So we can look and see what those requirements are and what that category is, so that we can nominate someone for that award. I think it'd be great for recognition. So that went well. The last thing I want to say is that I want to make sure that the police, fire and, and our general employees understand that we, we value all of them. And, and when, when I say that we value all of them, is that we, we don't want departments pitting against one another either. We, we value all of our employees. We understand that each have different roles, and they have different requirements, and some are high-risk more than others, but we value them all. And so we'll make sure that we, they understand that. I, I think the guy that comes to pick up my trash is just as valuable to the city as the police and the fire. Because if he doesn't show up for a couple of weeks, my wife is going to be on me. So, 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 so we, we value all of our employees. So we don't want anybody to get the wrong impression that we value one more than the other. We understand that, have different roles, but we value them all. And so I want to make sure that's understood. Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I agree with the city employee sentiment, and just kind of switch gears and, again, reiterate teachers again, because I can't, I can't thank them enough. I know that it's just a challenging time right now. So if there's any teachers watching, so much praise and gratitude to what they're doing. I walked into my, and I don't know how my wife does it, but I walked into my seven-year-old's virtual class the other day, and it's just, it's like twenty-seven-year-olds just, you know, asking the teacher, where are we? What are we doing? You got kids doing cartwheels in these Zoom sessions. So, the challenges that these, these teachers are facing in this, in this COVID environment, this virtual environment. And then come Friday, when the CPS starts some of the face-to-face stuff on Friday, it's just this, I've got such a tremendous amount of respect for what our teachers are doing. And I hope that we still continue that close relationship with our school board member to help out in any way that we can. But just want to keep praising all of our teachers out there, so...
Awesome. Thank you.
And congratulations to Melissa.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Next up, Edward.
Well, I'm hoping that you all agree with me tonight, and you will appoint and ratify Mr. Weatherford, who has been patiently sitting here through the meeting. Because I'm tired of being the Acting Public Works Director, I have another role that I need to fill. So, I'm excited. You've, you've seen his resume, you've all had an opportunity to meet with him. One of the exciting things is he comes from Houston, from the City of Houston. So, and he has a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge in drainage, roadway, streets, an area that, as you guys have all been saying loud and clear, that we need to put some more focus and some more resources into. And we have really been working hard to put more resources into that. So, I think we've got a jewel. I think we got, you know, very fortunate to have him apply from Texas, and he and his wife are moving, have moved here to Florida. They do live in the City of Apopka. That is a great thing. So, we're excited, and he's here, and he can, I know he's met with you, but he can, I don't want to steal his thunder, if he probably has some things he wants to say. And, but looking for your appointment and ratification of, of Jeff as our Public Services Director.
So we have him come forward. Come on, Jeff. Boy, now you get the real grilling while you're on camera. Jeff wants you, because you're on camera, wants to tell us a little bit about you. So for the folks that, that haven't met you yet, tell them...
Well, Merrick Commissioners, I'm really happy to be here. I'll try not to take up too much time, since it's already about nine o'clock. I'm a civil engineer. I've got more than twenty-five years of experience. I've worked in both the public and private sector. As Mr. Bass said, most recently, I spent about fifteen years with the City of Houston, where I just retired from, as their Director of Transportation and Drainage Operations. That I'm certified as a professional traffic, traffic operations engineer, served as the City Traffic Engineer for Houston. And I'm looking forward to all of the exciting things we're going to be doing here.
Are you sure after tonight's meeting?
Yes, sir, I am. After fifteen years of watching the Houston City Council, I'll give, I'll give the council members some pointers in private.
Any questions for...
Oh, just, again, I thoroughly enjoyed meeting with you, discussing. We, we talked at length, and I think your resume obviously speaks for itself. But we talked about everything from pros and cons of roundabouts and just everything else. And so, really looking forward to, to working with you, as, as, as long as the entire board feels that way.
Well, I want to say welcome to Florida, and... Well, I want to say welcome to Florida. Um, and I apologize for not being able to meet with you on, on, on Monday. Uh, my wife lost her sister on Sunday night, so we were in Jacksonville spending some time with family. Uh, but I did meet you at the axe-throwing, uh, ribbon-cutting, and, uh, was very impressed with you on that day, and so, welcome to the city of Apopka.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Becker?
No, and again, thank you for the conversation that we had on Monday. Um, it was nice to be able to chat with you, let you know what my priorities are in terms of, you know, infrastructure, beautification, that sort of stuff. Um, and not to make light of the situation that just happened in Deland, my thoughts are with that community. But I'm just happy, you know, with your background in Houston, storms and stuff like that, that they didn't call you within the last, you know, week to come and help them out, because can't imagine what they're going through in some of that storm, uh, recovery that they have. But really excited about your background, your, uh, experience, um, you know, the ability to have some of your expertise in-house, that we don't necessarily have to go outsource third-party type of stuff. So, I think there's a, a lot of benefits to, um, having you onboard, so.
Yeah. I, I'll just finish up with, so he's, I said, well, so what do you like to do? He said, I love to scuba dive. And he said, you know, the nice thing about Apopka, he says, I'm less than two hours to each coast, so I can go scuba diving on the West Coast on Monday, and then scuba dive on the East Coast on Tuesday. I go, whoa, that's during the week. This is weekends. [laughing] But no, I tell you, I couldn't be more proud of, you know, uh, of Jeff's resume and, and the things I think he's going to bring to the table for here in the city of Apopka. So, with that, look for motion to approve Jeff Weatherford as our new Public Service Director.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Banks, and second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries to the House.
You're on board. Thank you.
Did, did you ask if he was a Gator fan?
He's not. [laughing] He, he came, when I met him the first time, he had this Texans shirt on, so, no.
As far as college, though, I've got to go with the Scarlet Hawks.
[laughing]
Who doesn't have a football team?
All right. Edward, rate study?
Real quick, I wanted to give you an update on the rate study for the utility rates, the stormwater rates. Um, we got some, um, correspondence back from Rothelis. As you know, they are the ones that we have under contract that are looking at our water sewer reuse rates, stormwater rates. They're looking at our general fund, um, indirect allocation method, and they're looking at our school impact fee, um, collection that we get when we collect the school impact fees, because that's a requirement too, that that's, that those are all calculated. And we received notice from them due to COVID and their process and everything, that they have had to extend their deadline to December thirtieth, um, 2020. So, we've approved that. Um, and so, I just wanted to let you know that, that that's the update, that they're still working through those rates. And again, all of that will come back to a public hearing. You'll see all of that presentation and everything. But I wanted to make you aware of that, so that, that's an issue that you've been looking at. I, I know. Couple other things I want to mention. You've, I don't know if you've heard yet or not, we had, um, some roof leaking down at Public Services at the complex. We have reached out to the insurance company, because it has some damage on the inside of the building. We have, uh, the building dried out, got it secured. We have the employees, you know, we've moved them into the, to the better location of the building. So, we've taken all the measures that we need to do there. We've reached out to the insurance company. We heard a little bit back from the insurance company. They're telling us that there may be some portion that they may be able to help us recover because of the, the actual damage to the, to the inside of the building. We are getting quotes currently. We're looking at the, the, a couple of the vendors. The vendor that did the, the half of the, the one side of the City Hall roof, we're getting some quotes. Um, trying to get some other quotes. We want to make sure that we got a good price. What, the reason I want to bring that up tonight is, I'm not sure we're going to, we, currently, we have the roof bid. The roof, um, contractor that we're looking for is out to bid now. I don't know that we're going to have time to get to that on this roof. This is an emergency situation, and I think this roof, we need to take action on this roof sooner rather than later. So, we'll get, we're getting all the quotes. As you know, there is funding in that budget. You had, had, um, you've, we funded the roof in this budget current year. So, what I want to, what I'm telling you is, and I'll, and I'll stay in touch with you, is that we'll get those quotes, make sure we're getting the best price, um, get the information from the insurance company, and see if we can't take care of this roof situation. So, I wanted to let you know that, so you had the information, so that you, you weren't surprised. Again, we will bring it back. Whatever action happens, we'll bring it back, so that you have all the information, and it's transparent, and you can see it. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, the, um, road resurfacing will begin in September. So, you will see, again, it's been delayed. COVID has really, really put a toll on all of our vendors, but we've really been pushing them from our standpoint. I'm glad Jeff's here, just in time, just in time to make sure that our road resurfacing is, is, is good. So, um, that should begin in September, around September first, first week of September, or somewhere around there. So, I wanted to give you that. Um, something else, I guess, I guess that's it. That's it. That's all that's on my list. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. All right, last but not least. Okay, we've got the numbers for COVID.
Got to turn to the
Oh, I'm, geez, yes, yes. Well, how could I forget?
I haven't spoken enough today.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got [laughing] forgot all about it. I don't know.
All right.
All right. Good evening, members of the council. Um, to make a note to what you'd mentioned earlier, Council Becker, I know most of you are aware that I actually still reside in Deland. Thankfully, um, my home is actually on the southeastern portions of the city, and the storm hit right in the north-central. However, the tornado, which has been confirmed, it was an EF2, was between a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen mile an hour winds. Uh, my wife received a picture. The tornado actually passed within fifteen hundred feet of my wife's office. Um, she heard the noise. She said it did not sound normal. They all ran into their, um, safe room, and then she was sent a picture, and it is a clear funnel cloud going right across the street from her office. So, it was
It's rare that you even get one in Florida.
It was, yeah, to be rare, to be a confirmed EF2. The National Weather Service confirmed it as an EF2 based on the damage, and that it actually, it touched down. Um, it skirted pretty much, it's, it's, it, it was just north of the Stetson campus, and that is, that's an area that's really not far from downtown Deland. It's, it's a heavily populated portion of the city. Thankfully, there were no injuries or deaths reported. It's just property damage and trees uprooted, and those things can be fixed. All right, tonight I want to give you a, what's basically the ten-thousand-foot view down of the, uh, the NEB litigation. As most of you are aware, the litigation was commenced in June of last year, in which we were filing an action against the billing provider for, um, emergency services. Where the lawsuit stands today, um, they file NEB, uh, we have three defendants, NEB, Three Rivers, who is alleged to be a, is alleged to be the actual parent company of NEB, and Mr. David Sulek, who's the individual who negotiated the contracts on behalf of NEB. And we believe in there are allegations that were asserted that David Sulek has enough contacts with Three Rivers, in which the court has actually ruled that there is enough to tie Three Rivers to, to NEB for the case to move forward. Um, recently, it was shortly after I joined, um, the city, the Circuit Court did grant in part and deny, and, uh, deny in part, uh, Three Rivers, NEB's, and Mr. Sulek's motion to dismiss. They granted the, Mr. Sulek's individual motion to dismiss because of the way the complaint was originally written. They did not find there were enough facts in the complaint to tie Mr. Sulek to the, to the counts. The way it was drafted, it was, uh, all three were dra, were, all allegations were, and all counts were on all three together. Um, since then, we have amended the complaint, narrowed down the counts, because there were some aspects, who I think, which I believe they were duplicative, as I took a second look at the complaint, and we narrowed it down to, there are counts against the corporate entities, so NEB and Three Rivers, um, for conversion, for fraud, for breach of contract, and then there's a separate count against Mr. Sulek individually for fraud in the inducement. Um, we believe these will survive any motion to dismiss. During that time, though, um, Three Rivers and NEB submitted what's called an offer of judgment, which under the rules of civil procedure and Florida statutes, if a defendant offers, submits an offer of judgment, which is that they will receive a judgment in that amount, if you proceed forward and the judgment that they requested is within a certain percentage of that amount, then, um, you are liable for their attorney's fees. So, at that time, we've received, we've received that, we've, um, you know, taken it accordingly. Um, once we submitted our amended complaint, we actually submitted a counteroffer, a counter-settlement offer. Because these are confidential settlement negotiations, I'm not going to go into the details of the settlement offer here at, at the public hearing tonight. I will, if you wish, speak with each one of you individually to present you what the, uh, the offer and the counteroffer are. Um, and then if we're going to act as a collegial body, we will, we can meet in executive session to discuss the options. But I wanted to brief you in the fact that there is currently, there are settlement offers on the table between the two parties. We've been weighing the, um, the options, and I think if, um, I'm available to speak to each one of you individually to discuss what is there, and as, and also give you each ramification, the pros and cons of the offers and, and counteroffers. And then when it's kind of time to make a decision, I would advise we sit in executive session to, to go over, um, all of those things. In the dependency of the action, we have continued, I've continued to work with the Fire Department, and there are some concerns that we have regarding record-keeping on the part of both NEB and Three Rivers. The biggest concern we have is that they're still in possession of all the records. And my biggest concern is, those are public records pursuant to Chapter 119, yet they're being held, they're being held outside of the state of Florida. And I think there are certain impacts that I, that I am concerned with, which will weigh on when, how, and when we, um, we weigh the settlement offer. But I wanted to keep you abreast of what the situation is with the, um, the case. I mean, I, I'm, I'll answer any questions, but bear in mind that I cannot, I do not really want to go into this, the details of the settlement discussions, because those are confidential pursuant to both the, the rules of evidence and the rules of civil procedure. So, I do not want to go into the details at, at public hearing, especially without the presence of counsel for NEB and Three Rivers.
Any, any questions?
Do we have a deadline? Is it when we have to make an agreement?
No, there isn't. We've, there is no deadline. I've advised them that I'm still presenting the, the matters to, to counsel. So, we're not bound to any deadlines as of yet. Actually, they haven't even filed an answer, uh, um, in regards to our amended complaint. Um, all they've done is they've, they have filed a, what's called a 57105 motion for attorney's fees. There, it's a standard boilerplate argument that, uh, basically, our argument, our complaint has no basis and is frivolous. I vehemently disagree with that, but that's what we lawyers do. We can disagree about everything. So, all right, so the second [inaudible] Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll just take you up on your offer.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll need individual.
Right, yeah, you, give me a call. You know, my office, or drop by. My office is, I have an open-door policy, and I think all the staff knows, they readily just walk right into my office and ask, and I, I will not turn anyone away unless my door is closed. But the, that's the only time I won't be taking visitors. But if my door's open, walk right in, sit down, and I, I will discuss anything with you. That's, that's my policy. Twenty, anytime I'm here in the building, if the door's open, come on in, and I will answer your questions. All right, so the second, um, aspect of my presentation is, and I didn't want to jump on this, but this is something, this is what came up in, in, during the public discussion. But, uh, we did receive, and, and when I was prepared for the presentation, I was going to go into that, we did receive receipt from the Florida Public Employees Relations Commission that they received a request, a petition for what's called registration and certification of a, of a union on behalf of the, uh, Police Department employees. Uh, it was filed by the Police Benevolent Association. Um, and now, just before the meeting, Chief McKinley did hand me that, um, right now, he's been served with the paperwork. I will be filing tomorrow morning a notice of appearance on behalf of the city with PERC, so that the paperwork be sent to, to me, so I can keep abreast of it. But now, PERC has issued that the matter is now in what is called the registration and certification proceedings, in which they are seeking to be certified as the bargaining unit on behalf of the Police Department. Um, under Florida statutes and well as all the case law, this is the proceedings for the city to have any objections. At such time, I will be, I will be requesting a copy of the petition from PERC and see if there are any, um, any bases for objection on the part of their petition. Right now, I don't, I don't have the petition. It hasn't, it hasn't been sent to us. Um, PERC does require, and they submitted as part of the notice, that, um, there will be a notice that has to be posted at the Police Department. We'll be preparing these and posting them, that this matter is now with the Public Employees Relations Commission. Um, and we can address those matters. I don't have any details as to the basis of the petition that I can answer. Um, as soon as I ha, I do, um, we can go in. Now, when I received that they received it, I did speak with a colleague of mine, and on this basis, it was the City Attorney of the City of Deland, who's actually a, a good friend of mine. We've worked together, um, for years, and advised, um, him as to how the city has approached, whether they have a unionized police force, which they do, and, uh, made some recommendations. I would advise this counsel, and I'd probably recommend, that the counsel look into bringing in outside counsel specialized in collective bargaining to assist the legal department. Um, I was given a, an approximate budget that we would be looking at for such an endeavor, um, based on a city of Deland's size, which is slightly smaller than, than Apopka, but probably pretty comparable. Collective bargaining negotiations could run between twenty thousand dollars to slightly more if the negotiations become more drawn out, if the sides are too far apart. Um, and then they have a continuing, uh, retainer with an outside counsel to handle those matters, to deal with arbitration issues and all of those. But that's going to really, we can go on a case-by-case basis. I'll be talking to some other, um, attorneys and getting their, their ideas and opinions too, to see how we can best approach this matter. But for the time being, I will be submitting a notice of appearance to get a, to get a hold of the documentation. But that's why I wanted to really stress on limiting the, the communications, because I don't want any statements to be brought up and used against the city, and when we were, when we were before PERC, in addressing whether or not they have followed all the statutory requirements for organizing, for organizing as a bargaining unit on behalf of the, uh, the employees of the City of Apopka Police Department. So, again, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them now, or if you want, again, drop by my office, feel free.
So, are we already down that road and, uh, no ability to make a U-turn, or?
No, we're
I know there's forty-six, uh, apparently, that, uh, signed on. What's the process there? Do they have to?
We're, we're at step one. They have filed, step, they have, um, filed. There's two options when you have, um, employees that are trying to organize. One of the options is they can attempt to organize and then ask the, the city, the local government, to voluntarily recognize them as the bargaining unit, or they can go straight to PERC and file their petition for registration and certification. Um, the, these employees went straight to PERC. So, at this point now, PERC will determine, PERC has currently given a notice, a notice that their application is sufficient. It is now, we have the opportunity to review that application and make any objections if we find there are legal bases to make objections. Uh, namely, some of the objections, just by example, is, have they named the right number of employees? Have they named employees who are actually exempt employees, who aren't entitled to be employees, such as certain confidential employees or managerial positions that are, would not be eligible to be, to be a, a part of a bargaining unit? Have they followed, the requirements for registration require that there be, um, they have to actually register as if they were licensing an organization under Chapter 120 of the, the Florida Administrative Procedures Act. Um, so we can challenge, if there's a basis for that, challenge whether they've registered properly or not. And then PERC will make the decision or not whether, no, they have met the rules for organization, and then PERC will govern their elections to elect what, who their officers are, and, um, whether they're then properly organized. And at that point, then, we, we could be in, in the, uh, in the posture of collectively bargaining. I think based on the timelines and maybe, I mean, I, I could be wrong, but based on the timelines that we now have for filing, for object, for any objections, and how long PERC usually takes, any potential collective bargaining with the employees' units probably going to affect the fiscal year 21, 22 budget. I don't think there's going to be enough time for them to be able to, to negotiate for fiscal year 2021.
And are we no longer now allowed to have discussion with any of those now that they've gone to PERC? Do we need to just?
At, at this, I, I would want to err on the side of caution.
Okay.
So, that's, that's just, I, I want to take a conservative approach on that. Uh, that answer could change if, if I am speaking with, um, with counsel, specialized counsel. I was recommended a law firm out of Orlando, that there's actually a local firm, they handle the city of Deland, and actually, um, I think they handle other, other local governments in, in central Florida. They came very highly recommended. Um, so I may be reaching out to them and then, and requesting counsel for, for authorization to engage, um, outside counsel to assist, and basically be acting assistant city attorneys for the purposes of collective bargaining.
Yeah, Commissioner Banks had touched on it. So, it, to use the terminology, like when we get bids and, right, that cone of silence kind of stuff, it's, you know, obviously, I'm respectful of our charter. I, I don't mean to, uh, instruct any employees how to do anything, but obviously, you've seen here, employees feel empowered to voice their opinions as a, as a resident of Apopka. What I, I just want to make sure, because I don't want to misstep, you know, similar to like sunshine laws between us, and be respectful for that. Since we are in this process now, right, and people can, people feel right, and people feel compelled to continue to voice concerns or thoughts or how to make things better, is it best just to kind of take a step back or?
I think so, especially, I just, I wouldn't advise you not to listen to employees, but I think it's important not to take a position of trying to get into a position of kind of offer negotiation, because one, I mean, with all due respect to the officer who did come and speak here earlier, I don't know if he's been authorized, I don't know if he is one of the names listed, neither does his counsel know if he's an authorized person to speak on behalf of a group of employees who are attempting to organize. So I don't want to have any statements misconstrued as certain negotiation, whereas we're not necessarily negotiating with someone who has authority to enter into such negotiations. So it's always better to just kind of leave things so that, you know, it's almost, not to put this in the police aspect, but you know, you have the right to remain silent so that none of your statements can be used against you. And that's why I always like to err on the side of caution and be conservative in that aspects.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I'll use open door.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Michael, appreciate that. Okay, last up here, got the numbers for COVID, trending down in the right direction, so take a look at those. Got a pretty interesting article, you know, talking about strapped states and peril recovery. And it was from the Wall Street Journal, just interesting about, as of 2019, the median state had 7.8% of its general fund set aside as reserves. 7.8%. So, you know, we're way above that, you know, we've really worked hard to get to where we are, and so I just wanted, just thought that was an interesting article, so take a gander at it if you get a chance. Second thing up, the, just tonight, from, let's see, what, was it one o'clock? Let me get the right times. From 1:00 AM tonight until Thursday morning sometime, they're going to be working at Piedmont, Wakava, and 436 are doing some improvements for pedestrians, so one of the lanes will be closed. So, single lane closures on the outside right lanes on eastbound and westbound State Road 436 at Piedmont-Wakava Road. So just, if you're out at 1:00 AM till they get it fixed, be careful. Next thing is, we've had four people already pick up packets for, to run for the seat two. Michael Griffin, Jesse Baron, who's here tonight, Diane Velasquez, and Gene Knight, all have picked up packets as of tonight. The last thing I think is kind of a neat, I always try to end with a positive note. Jill Semento from Parks and Rec had asked the, if we could do a launch ed, you know, launch ed for, it was mandatory for all high school, elementary, middle school students, they had to do launch ed until starting Friday, so, which means I had to go be able to get it online. And if, so for the families that didn't have internet or Wi-Fi, and I know they were giving out hotspots and whatnot, but we thought, Jill came to us and said, "Hey, let's, why don't we, why don't we offer up the Billy Dean Building at Lonzo Williams Park?" And I said, "Absolutely." So we had 15 kids sign up, I think 10 ended up showing up. We had a couple of kids at Fran Carlton to help them with launch ed. And here's the cool thing, so she says in the email, "One little thing that might be a nice touch is to mention that one of the kids who signed up, his mother lost her job due to COVID and they are now living out of her car. Because of this program and us being able to watch her son, she was able to job hunt and now has secured a job." Just thought that was a heartwarming story. So, pretty cool. So anyway, with that, meeting adjourned.